And move that to the consent agenda. As an action item, uh, let's see, G four?
G four three, G four A three.
Four, okay, yes, G four A three.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Alright, citizens and or delegation, is there anybody that has anything to say or speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Okay, we will then move to our bright lights, chain reaction.
I would like to introduce Amy Dillenberg, who's one of our school's social workers, and Lori Bachman, who's one of our school counselors, who are going to talk about chain reaction.
We're here just to kind of fill you in with some things we've been doing, primarily at the high school and middle school level. In the thirteen fourteen school year, the Equity Council had brought Rachel's Challenge in to just kind of do, talk about culture, climate, just a way of being together and treating each other respectfully, that would have a, you know, a positive impact on the larger community. Then we went into the fourteen fifteen school year, and after seeing that presentation at the high school, it was felt that it was a good investment of energy and funds. And we had that same Rachel's Challenge presentation, a little bit different version at the middle school level. And then we had planned to do chain reaction, which was a smaller group experiential portion that followed that up. Unfortunately, due to snow and ice and different conditions that arose last spring, we bumped the high school portion to this fall. So we had chain reaction at the high school this fall, and then recently this spring at Parkview, and that's what, we have some students here to talk about. The whole series of programs had very generous support from the Ashwabanon Education Foundation. And this Parkview Chain Reaction piece also had grant funding from the Schneider Foundation. The Parent Faculty Club, supported both with funds and with chaperones from the Parent Faculty Club Board. The day off chain reaction, as well as building level funds, helped with the presentation and things like that. And the girls will kind of talk about what the day was like. We had about eighty students participate, and about fifteen chaperones, both staff and parent faculty club members, so.
Do you guys want to introduce yourselves and just talk a little?
Oh, me? Okay, I'm Alexis Connaught. So, at Rachel's Challenge, we did many activities in like small groups, larger groups, and then just with partners. And one activity we did was called Cross the Line. And if what was said pertained to you, you would cross the line. And then you got to see others that were dealing with the same thing as you. And if you crossed the line, you made eye contact with someone across from you, and that helps for you to know that they are there for you. Also, we did an activity that everybody in your group had to put one foot on a yellow flag. And if you didn't have a foot on the yellow flag, you'd have to start over. And if you didn't work together, it would be almost impossible to do the game. Also, in small groups, we shared things that they would really, that they would know if they really knew you. Rachel's Challenge taught us how to use our words in a good way to make people, and have an impact on people's lives.
Okay, um, my name is Anna. So Rachel's Challenge was a very powerful and emotional day. It taught us how to use our voices in a good way, and it helped us to get our feelings out that we think we have to hide. Rachel's Challenge also helped us to take off our masks, to not be afraid to be yourself and to be scared, and not be scared of what others think of you. There were fun times, and there were serious times when people got to share anything they wanted to get out because they knew they could trust us. Rachel's Challenge was a great way to show people that there are people who love them and who care about them. That if they lose hope, they know they have someone to go to. Not only was Rachel's Challenge powerful, it changed people's lives.
So, I just wanted to speak real briefly about how this ties into our, our goals as a building, specifically at Parkview. And our, our building goals, and something that we've been working on, is the culture. The culture of the school, the climate of the school, and Amy referenced that a little bit in her opening. And this message fits perfectly with not only that specific goal, but some of our initiatives at Parkview as well. Such as the PBIS, Universal, we're at the Universal model right now, and then moving into Tier Two, which will begin to target small groups of students. And then whereas Universal's just for, for all students at Parkview. We also have a mental health initiative, specific to Parkview. It's a grant that we received. And again, with this message being all about compassion and kindness, it rolls right into, into the, the trauma-sensitive schools and mental health grant that we have received at Parkview. And then finally, we also have Empower. And Empower is sponsored by the Green Bay Packers, and it's a leadership. Students that not only would be positive, the goal would be to create positive leaders, but maybe not a student that would, you know, quickly pop up. It's to meet the, all students. And we were able to make a selection of twenty-four students, and the, the Green Bay Packers have hosted those students. We went for twelve, twelve girls, and then we had twelve males as well. And Anna, you're part of Empower. And the students need to make an I-will statement, and then have goals that represent that I-will statement. And we're going on Thursday to report out, the students will report out what their goals are, and again, tying into Rachel's Challenge with a compassion and kindness. So thank you for the opportunity for us to present tonight, and have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And before we approve the consent agenda, I'll go through the items. I wanted to make a correction. On item six, the award recipients stipends. When we approved this, we did this as a yearly stipend, so every year this would happen. And, and we had that corrected, but we had two thousand sixteen still listed in there. So we need a motion to take that out.
What do you want to do? So you're referring to the minutes, gradually?
Yeah, thank you. To the minutes, from last.
From number one?
From last meeting?
It would be six. You have to go back into the minutes.
So G one, and then in the minutes, number six.
It's for the award stipends. It says, he want, he, we changed it to a, to provide a yearly stipend of a thousand dollars to the Coles Award recipient, a thousand to the Golden Apple Award recipient, and five hundred to the teacher of the state's recipients. I had put in there two thousand and sixteen Golden Apple Award recipient, so I need to take two thousand and sixteen out. So they're reflected up from this point on, not just two thousand and sixteen.
Can we just make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes in the minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I'll make that motion.
Well, we'll, we'll go through the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the regular meeting, minutes from the exec session, schedule of checks written for sixteen through five-two of two thousand sixteen. Staffing, the hiring of Tricia Virts to one point oh, grade-three instructor at Valley View. The resignation of Jen, Jennifer Pratt as her full-time cross-category, cross-categorical instructor position at the high school, at the, effective at the end of the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the corrections in G one, as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay, just as a reminder, we listed some of the dates, upcoming dates. I want to thank everybody. We have our middle school, elementary, and high school graduation dates. But I also want to mention, last week I was at the convention, the Wazda Convention, Appleton. I had a conversation with two of the different reps from Neola. And last month, we approved the filling of a board vacancy policy. Just a heads up, I'm going to ask Jen to bring that back for a revision. We're not allowed, as they explained to me, to go beyond sixty days without appointing.
I don't believe that. I don't believe that.
Legally have it open, but he's saying, they're saying, if you're going to abide by the law, after sixty days, you have to appoint. So my, my next question to them was, well, if someone is not interested, you can't appoint someone. I would defer to legal counsel on that question if that would happen. But I'm just bringing this back. I mean, obviously, it's up to the board, but I want to recommend, if they're saying legally, that's, that's what, that's how they interpret them, Mark. So I, I would advise.
Can we get an attorney's opinion of that also?
I can get our own attorney's opinion, you know, it's, it's on our clock for me to do that, but I, I can, I'll do that for you, of course.
Sounds good.
I'll do that, and I'll, and if, if that opinion differs, and we're allowed to keep it the way it is, then I won't put it on the agenda, I mean, obviously, we would. How's that, is that?
Okay.
Otherwise, any other questions for me? Alright, we'll bring it back. We'll do a little homework with, have Bob Burns cross-check that with Neola. If you do that.
Okay, so we do not have any discussion or presentation items, so we'll move right on to J or action items. Grievance policy update, right?
That one, we talked about, you asked me to get legal opinion. And the legal opinion there, it's actually more important to have a board policy approved, is what the attorney would say in that grievance area, as compared to just having it in the handbook. More important to, to have an Indian board policy, so I would recommend we approve it, given the opinion that, that we follow that.
Do we approve that tonight, or is that something that we bring back?
I would recommend maybe approving.
Anybody have any comments on it, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grievance policy three-three-four-zero and policy four-three-four-zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, we got a first.
I hit the wrong X.
You okay?
That's alright.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carries. Fieldhouse scoreboards, Nick?
Uh, last year, at around this time, I came in and we talked about fieldhouse scoreboards. And this year, we kind of got put on the back burner. And I had a couple of groups approach me and say they're interested in giving some money towards that. Our ABA, which is our Youth Boys Basketball Association, and our AGYBA, which is our Girls' Youth Basketball Association. And then I, I said, well, I can talk with the vendor that we work with and see what the, if the prices have changed. And you have that information in front of you from Daktronics or Aim Electronics, and it's a Daktronic scoreboard. The ABA said they would donate five thousand dollars, the AGYBA said five thousand dollars. I have a meeting next week with the JAG backers, but in my preliminary discussions with them, they also indicated they would donate, prior to a vote, five thousand dollars. And then our girls volleyball program, which would also have utilization of those scoreboards, said they would donate three thousand dollars. As you probably saw, that leaves us a little bit short of what the goal is, or what the cost of those are. I do have money, that's fundraised money, in, from the JAG Open, from WIAA events that we host, that's not budgeted money, so we'll not take away from anything that's in my athletic or activities budget, to cover the difference of about eight thousand dollars. So, or nine thousand dollars, right around there. So the, the goal is to have new scoreboards, and part of the reason for that is, our scoreboards are nearing their life. Not to say we wouldn't continue to use those, we would take those down and put them up in our auxiliary gym, and take the scoreboards that are in there, retire those. So we would still get use out of the ones that are up there until they need replacement themselves. And the other added feature is that the new scoreboards obviously enhance the fieldhouse and have functions that we currently don't have. So when we put in for hosting WIAA basketball or volleyball events, they always are wondering what upgrades you've done to your fieldhouse, or what is new that would help you land some of those big events. So I'm looking for approval to continue on this path to have new scoreboards in place for the sixteen-seventeen school year. Any questions?
Nick, is, is this the one that you're talking about with the, you know, the sides?
Yes, correct.
Two different sides?
Yep, so it has, the, the added feature are stat panels on each side. On one end of the fieldhouse, we would have those stat panels that show, for volleyball, it shows player kills, assists. For basketball, it shows the player rebounds, points. And so that's an added enhancement or feature that most new fieldhouses, or when people upgrade their scoreboards, I think Bayport just did that. If you go into Connaught's Gym, they have that, where the, the stat panels on there.
Is it correct that they, there's some problem, some electronic problem with the boards now?
Um, that's always a hit or miss. Today, we could probably turn them on and they'd be fine. This past winter, we did troubleshoot a couple times, but, you know, cross your fingers every time you turn them on.
Yeah, I think I was at a game and it wasn't working properly, and clock wasn't working just right, and, and, okay.
Is the center section the same size as the old ones?
The center section is the same size. On the one end, where we add the stat panels, we'd have to do a little bit of work with how we want them to actually look, or where we, how we would slide those down a little bit, but they're the same size. Much more durable. They would not need protective screens. There's video where they're shooting out of a jugs machine, soccer balls and footballs right at these boards, and they are resistant to that velocity, or, or kids throwing stuff at them, so they're a little bit tougher than the ones from fifteen, twenty years ago.
Nick, when you brought this up last year, I know our, one of our big issues was the cost to the district.
Yep.
And I think it would probably stay the same now, you know, that's, I don't want to see any money coming out of the year athletic budget that would go to your athletic teams, you know. I know you've got a limited budget there, and I didn't want to see that stretched. I mean, if all, all the money's donated, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but I don't want to see any money come out of your athletic budget for this.
Right, this is, I have an athletic budget, and then I got, I do some fundraising on my own. And that money, like from the JAG Open over the last ten years, we've raised sixty thousand dollars. And that money's been given back to everything from uniforms to projects to all sorts of, you name it, it's given, been given back to athletics. There just happens to be some seed money in there, money that I haven't used over the course of the last two JAG Opens, just because I wasn't sure how fast that replenishes itself and what a good use for that is. And I think with these, these groups, the ABA, the AGYBA, the programs that want to see new scoreboards, they like to know that, at least from my end, or where I'm getting my cash from, that there's some, some skin in the game, so to speak. And with my fundraised money, or money that's sitting in those accounts, there just happens to be right now.
I look at that, there's no corporate sponsorship on these. I, I think that's, you know, when it's schools, school setting and everything, it's better to have it not, not corporate sponsoring, where you could, where a lot of your scoreboards are going towards.
Yeah.
So if it's fundraised through the JAG Open, or Taste of Ashwabanon, or that's through JAG backers, I guess, but I mean, you know, it's not coming out of our general budget, I guess I'm okay with it.
I mean, their, their, their recognition is certainly through programs and announcements. But I try to stay away from names surrounding it. Not only is that an added cost, it's, you know, just, it, it looks fresher or more clean without some of that stuff up there once in a while.
Did you say that we may get additional games out of this, you know, because of the, the nicer scoreboards?
It helps. I mean, I mean, a lot of the fieldhouses are pretty, pretty nice. But it helps when you, when you say, yeah, we've upgraded this, or this is, this is new. Obviously, our, our fieldhouse has a great seating capacity, so that's a, a great thing. But it certainly doesn't hurt when you, when you share that. So I know next year, we've already got what we're going to get. But for future years, when you, when you show this, it's, it helps.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't take a brain surgeon to operate these things, does it?
No.
No, I mean, because half the times, you got these scoreboards and everything, and you don't know how to change the score, or, or.
It, it's pretty much the same control box that we currently have, and our, our workers that have worked the scoreboard should have no trouble working this. Part of the, part of the program is training on the new scoreboards. So I, I don't foresee any of our people that do it having any too much troubleshooting or questions about it.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the scoreboard replacement. And we're talking, based on the proposal, it's option two, is that right?
The information you have, I had him re, I had the Aim Electronics. And the reason I wanted you just to see those three options is because the one option, you would need some training, Mark, with the video display board, and I didn't want to, I don't, I don't feel comfortable going that route. Not only is it a tremendous expense, I'm not comfortable with that, but I think in the information, you got option one. But option two is.
Is the twenty-seven thousand?
Correct.
Okay. So, so I'll make the motion to approve the request for the new scoreboard at the, well, what's listed as option two, twenty-seven thousand, three fifty.
With no district money being used, correct?
Correct.
Wait a second?
Second.
Oh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
J three, open enrollment, Brian?
Okay, well, I'll cut to the chase. We have all the figures, we're kind of following a similar trend again this year, in terms of in and out. Bottom line is, we have, we have two hundred forty-eight applications. We're going to recommend approving two hundred and fifteen, and we're going to recommend denying thirty-three. Now you see, we have a few bulges in grades one and three, so there's no space in those areas. We have the same pattern this year, where our special needs programs, there's no space available there. There's sixteen students there. Then we have two students that were already open enrolled. That seems to happen every year. Talking to Jen, you get a duplicate application, so you have to, you have to pull out the duplicates there. So we recommend you approve two hundred and fifteen, and we're denying thirty-three. Again, we keep projecting that eventually this is just going to taper off.
Net gain of?
Well, I wouldn't call it a net gain because two hundred and fifteen approvals doesn't mean two hundred and fifteen students. We need ninety students to replace our seniors graduating. There's always some attrition also in other grades, and we won't get all two hundred and fifteen of these students. So this'll, I think will have us a slight increase, but I haven't run it through. We look at siblings and all these other things to see, you know, to try to estimate how many of these two hundred and fifteen will be here.
Is that by the average, that we've been approving?
It seems in that range.
Maybe a little bit more?
We've been rating two hundred, just over two hundred student range, so.
You know, a parent can apply to two or three districts, so they can all be in play. So to really know exactly who's coming, remember, that's not an exact science. I always keep squeezing the key on what that number is. Try to be conservative with the budget, projecting that, which, I mean, gets wise. Of course, you want to be, you want to undershoot and overshoot on the budget.
Right, just from my understanding, so the thirty-three that we deny?
Yeah.
Do they go on a waiting list? Is that correct?
Fifteen go on a waiting list for first and third grade. And if we have spaces after June tenth, is it? June tenth, then we can accept them. And last year, we did accept some of the students that were on those waiting lists. And the special ed programs, we don't have a waiting list, because they're, they're beyond capacity at this point, they're.
We had approved four, the Corneille, which I went, and there were two that applied, so two of the fourth special ed that we did approve back in January. And we did get two, and so they are filed right here.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the.
Can I ask a question quick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry? So fifteen, because of no space, is that just no space, as in there's not enough actual physical facility space, or there's not enough teachers?
Well, we, we set our, our limits in January. We have to set how many open room students by grade and by building that we'd accept. And it doesn't make financial sense to accept small amounts of students where you have to add a teacher. So we set them at, at course levels. What we'll do is, we'll look at where we are with actual resident students, if we have move-ins and things like that. We may need to add those staff members anyway, and then we would go back to these people and, and say, now, we do have room, but we are conservative when we set our limits in some of those areas.
And what we set in January, we have to abide by up until through June tenth. So if we set there was only two seats in first grade, then we can only accept two kids in first grade.
So it's not necessarily about the physical space?
No, it's, it is, it is. I mean, the physical space, we are getting to the point at our elementaries where physical space is becoming an issue, because we have larger grade levels. Third grade, for example, at Valley View next year is a very large group. And we've got a, you know, we have staff moving between grade levels to adjust where we have big grades versus smaller grades. So there aren't a lot of open classrooms at the elementaries, and you want to keep grade levels, classrooms together. So that, that plays into it, but we haven't, I wouldn't say we're at a building capacity yet at our elementaries, but grade level capacity we are.
So when we initially talked about how do we determine, every district's required by the state to determine capacity, and to, the board approve whatever that max is, that was our conversation. Well, what is the building capacity at the high school, Valley View, Corneille? That was the starting point. Really, at the high school, we probably have a long ways to go before we'd be at total capacity there, given.
Middle school as well.
Do you get the same, the same financial aid per an open enrollment student as you do for a regular student?
No.
What's the difference?
Completely different funding. Open enrollment students, we get just over sixty-six hundred dollars in the year they attend. So it's, it's at the end of the year, so in June, we get that money for the students attending for the year. And then if they're not back the next year, we get nothing. A resident student, we get just over ten thousand dollars in revenue limit. So that's a combination of taxing authority and state aid. We don't get six thousand dollars of the aid. So we get less money from the state for a resident than we get for an open enrollment student, but we get levy authority. So we have more for a resident student than a open enrollment student. But the resident students are on a three-year average, because it's not complicated enough, we have to make it more. So you only get a third of that the first year they show up, and you get two-thirds of it the second year, and you get the full about their third year. But then when they graduate, you still have two-thirds and a third left to get, because it's a three-year average.
The reasoning is because you get an open room, assuming it's coming from a different district. And the district they're coming into, the buildings have got to be heated already, the staff is already hired, so they.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at eliminating the fixed costs for an open enrollment student of the building maintenance and some of those other things.
I was just curious, because I'm looking at the numbers, and I'm like, well, if you have fifteen students, and if you had enough for another class, I guess, per se, you know, does it make sense to?
Jen, can you send them that?
Their, their fifteen aren't all one grade, though.
Yeah, I know. And they're not all one building.
I'm just kind of trying to accentuate all this against.
Did I approve numbers that we did in January? And you can see, it'll be a lot more clearer.
Yeah. And the other thing I would add to that, James, it's fifteen students, that probably means you're looking at seven or eight that would actually show up out of that, because our history is about fifty to sixty percent, depending on the year.
Yeah, still a good problem, yeah. Thanks.
Okay, so are we approving both open and out at the same time?
You can separate, or you can do it together, doesn't that? I would see them both approved.
So I'll, I'll talk about the out real quick. There isn't a lot you can do on out. We can't deny for financial reasons, we can't deny for any reason other than there's a set percentage out that a district can exceed. So, no offense, they don't give you a lot of authority on out to even disapprove. they don't give you a lot of authority on out to even disapprove these applications, so it really is simple.
Well, only if they, they're trying to apply to a district that doesn't have a program available for them.
Well, then that district would, would deny, we, we really don't have a lot of...
We could deny if they weren't old enough, really, our, really, our only leg to stand on was before with special ed, if we were, if they were going to charge us a lot of money.
That we could do, then it was financial burden, now it's gone, so...
So, just, where, where's McFarland?
That's an online school. We have two of the students in there that are, for online reasons, open enrollment. Every year, we have a handful of those that, it's like homeschooling, only it's online.
We get quite a few of those back in the year.
Yeah, they, because they're very, very, very strict, if you go five days without participating, they will return you back to your home school. We usually get, what goes, we usually get back.
So, so those, those that are like, uh, there's like twenty going to Green Bay, is that because they perhaps family moved into Ashwabanon, and they wanted to continue going to school in their former school?
If you look at the chart, um, it tells you the reasons, out of the... The out ones, um, out of the twenty, out of the twenty, thirty-one kids, I'm asking, well, twenty-two of them have never even attended Ashwabanon before, which means that they are more than likely, were attending whatever district they're applying to, moved into Ashwabanon, and want to continue.
Continue where they were, that's what I was thinking, okay.
Any more comments? Hey, can we get a motion, though?
I'll make a motion for open enrollment to accept two-hundred-and-fifteen of our applicants and deny thirty-three.
To allow, you mean allow them to go out?
Allow them to go out.
Can we give a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion and a second, anything else, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four, staff layoffs, Keith?
Okay, with the last meeting, you approved, uh, three preliminary layoffs, nothing has changed as far as our staffing plan, so we are asking that you approve official layoff, all three of these have been talked to before last meeting, they all received their preliminary notice, they had five days to request a, a private meeting with the board, haven't had any requests, they understand the situation, it's not, you know, it's unfortunate when we have to do these, but it's just a fact of the way our budget process works, based on course requests for students and things like that, we have, we typically have these partial layoffs.
And then again, if, um, if the need arises, we can bring them back.
Yeah, they will be on a recall list, so if we would be adding things that they're qualified for, then we would be offering them some or all of that FTE back.
I make a motion to approve the non-renewal for purposes of layoff, as written.
Can we give a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Kay, Board and Superintendent Communications.
I've got one. Passed this letter out, they've got an email sent to me, and I'm gonna read it. Just so everybody has a copy of it, uh, to my concerns, I'm writing in regards to safer out to school, to from school. In February, at the end of the school day, I walked to Pioneer, to pick up my two grandsons, I live in on, on a patch on the west side of Pioneer, and walked to Pioneer with cars parked on both sides of the road, traffic going into the parent pickup line on the west side of the school. That was tricky enough for an adult to do safely, the walk home was even more of a challenge, cars were parked on both sides of the road, and now there was also moving traffic going bor- both north and south on Pioneer. I walked single file, as I instructed my grandsons to stay directly behind me, it was not a safe feeling at all. There was nowhere for children to walk safely, as there were snowbanks along the curbside. Without the snowbanks, the children could at least walk on people's yards, but that is not ideal either. Previous to picking up my grandsons, they had no, no idea how unsafe the children walking, biking home in that area were. I didn't have a clear picture of just how heavy and congested the traffic was. I would like to see the school traffic and safety of these, the children observed, and hopefully, a safe solution can be found. It's important that all of our children have a safe route to and from school. Thank you for your time and consideration, this is important matter, Jackie Boucher. Now, uh, when I was campaigning also for, uh, the last election, I've heard this, uh, from several other parents in that whole neighborhood. I have talked to the village on this, and I am gonna bring this forward to the village as well at our next meeting. They're, Allison Swanson is for sure aware of this issue, and, um, it's quite dangerous, I guess.
Pete, can you come in and add a vote?
Yes, um, Jackie and I met and reviewed, uh, this area that she was walking, and Jackie wanted to propose sidewalks, in a certain section in front of, uh, the teacher parking lot, and, uh, in reviewing, there's no parking signs that are on the street, on the east side of the street, uh, and those currently aren't enforced, and, uh, a great safety measure would be to enforce those signs, uh, so then the students would have a walking area instead of installing the sidewalk, they could walk in the walking lane there. Also met with Officer Dunlop to review the area, and she felt that was a, um, a great option, that we could then, uh, put new signs up and enforce, uh, next school year, and communicate to all of our parents of that change.
I, I wanna make sure that everybody's aware of it, I mean, because we don't want any safety issues, I mean, safety issues is the biggest problem, I think, this, that we face is, uh, in today's age of, uh, you know, getting, keeping kids safe, in, in school, at school, before school, after school. It's the most important thing, I think, we have to concentrate on right now.
And I think walking safely, would, having safe walking, it would encourage us, parents to let students walk, which is what we wanna encourage, because it's a healthy thing as well, and, and as, and if you check with the village, they'll tell you this, we haven't had a pedestrian incident on way to or from school in my sixteen-plus years here, so we are very safe, but I get the concern here, there is a lot of congestion, a lot of traffic, and the more we can do to improve that, I wanna provide a situation where parents feel safe, and as they should, I think, be safe to walk and let their children walk to school.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else have? Okay, future, uh, board meetings and topics, Mark, do you have something else?
Yes, I do, uh, last meeting, I asked that we put the Coramere Safe Plan on the, um, the agenda, and I'm gonna pass out a copy of Keith's email on this. Again, it's child safety at the schools, and I wanna put back on the agenda, I want the public to actually see what it's, what we're talking about, have a kick at the cat, we, I mean, we don't wanna spend, uh, thousands of dollars on something that they haven't even seen or heard about. It's just something that we have to make the public aware of, that we're, what we're doing and trying to make things more safe. It's not that his report or anything was not, was bad, but I still think it should be on the agenda to give the public input, that's number one. So I'd like that to come back, and also, Brian, uh, from the last meeting, uh, policy fifty-one-eleven, I would like to come back.
Okay.
And I won't go into the details on that, I'll bring it back forward when we, uh, bring it, uh, the next time, all right?
On the parking item, what is a discussion item on the parking?
Please.
What is fifty-one-eleven?
Eligibility, eligibility of resident and non-resident students.
Anything else? Okay, our next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June thirteenth, at six-thirty here at the district office. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.